Welcome to another episode of My Not Matters here at the Dakota and brought to you by Shock Safe In Lock. We are in the middle of our budget chronicles where we're talking with key players for the 2025 budget. And so we continue that today with City Council Vice President Lisa Olson. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. Always good to have good, good conversation with you. Appreciate you stopping by the studio. So first off, let's jump in. This budget is just something that got thrown at you guys the other day. First thing you knew about it. You hadn't done any, there's no preparation that's been demanded or anything like that going into the lies. This has been a long process.
It is a very long process. Yes. It, well, I think it starts with city staff before it starts with, with us, but April, early May, certainly we've had our, our voices being heard and direction being given to city staff on, on what we want to see, what our priorities are.
Absolutely. And so it's an interesting thing because you guys are given your priorities of what you're looking for from the city of Minot, from the direction, things like that. And then you're also having to listen to the city staff and understand some of the challenges or some of the victories that they're, they're having in their department. How does that process go as you sit down with city staff and work to understand what they're going through?
Well, I think it is very interesting to hear from their perspective, how their department could best be run. When we're having those early conversations, we are seeing everything that they think would be best case scenario. How many employees do they need? What projects would they like to move forward with? What equipment do they need to carry those out? So they give us the big picture and then they bring us kind of a more realistic ask as to this is what we absolutely have to make, or what we need to make our department function for the next year.
With the zero-based budget focus that has been brought this year, has that changed that conversation from perhaps different ones that you've had in the past with those department leaders?
So it's not my first rodeo. This is my 15th, this is my 15th budget to go through.
Right, but, but I interrupt you. Okay. Right. It's not your first rodeo, but is, is this is the first time in recent history that we've used zero-based budget?
So going back to city manager Staub, he did this same sort of budgeting process. We were having some difficult times that, you know, well, I think during his last year as city manager. So he did use a zero-based approach. I believe that this is city manager Stewart's first attempt at, at this style.
Okay. Sounds good. So with that base, kind of, does that change those conversations? And that's where I interrupted you at. Sorry.
Well, I think it does. I mean, I, I think more of the onus is put on city staff to say, just because you got $15,000 in this line item last year, it doesn't mean it goes to 15,005. You know, you have to really be able to determine if that is something that is needed for the upcoming year.
Right. Do, do you feel like it's a good principle? You've seen it both ways. Do you feel like it's a technique that should be used? Or a philosophy that should be used every budget? Or is it something that needs to just reset the budget every certain amount of years? You've seen both sides, so you probably can get, have some good perspective.
It probably is beneficial to do it on an annual basis. I'm only guessing that it is a lot more work for city staff. But I think we get the truest picture when they actually do that.
Right. That makes sense. So as you've gone through the budget tour, is there anything that really stood out to you? You guys go around to these different departments, you get to see their needs. And obviously this is year over year that you get to see this. So there shouldn't be any surprising like deficiency that like, wow, you guys need new vacuums. You haven't had these updated in 30 years. Nothing like that. But as you go through this, are there things that just like stand out to you as, as you go through those tours?
Well, I think one really interesting thing that was focused on this year were efficiencies. And sometimes we're not made aware of the efficiencies that our, our city staff are able to find and how they can save dollars for our community. And I think our, our city department heads did a really nice job in finding those so that we were aware of the, the work that our employees do to use the dollars the most wisely way that they can.
That's an interesting point because I think there's just a immediate thought that people have tied to government that it's inefficient. And so, and that's not brought on necessarily by city governments that typically is thought with the federal government. And that's a whole nother discussion, right? But it seems like that's a fairly common thought. So it's interesting that you point out the efficiencies that we are focusing on in the city. Do you feel like we run fairly, there's always room for improvement we would have to agree on, I'm sure. But do you feel like we've run fairly efficient?
I think we do. And I think that our employees find pride in finding those efficiencies. And I'm glad that they're brought to us. We had one example when we were going through the public works department and it was a piece of equipment that could be used for excavating some pipe. I don't remember all of the details. I think if the ask would have come to us for that piece of equipment, it wouldn't have made sense until they showed us how much time they save and how much money they save. And so, no, I, I think that they're always making attempts to, to be as lean and efficient as they can.
Absolutely. Another thing that was really neat about this budget process, and this has been a year-over-year thing, but the accessibility to the public for, for the department leaders, city manager, you know, we have the budget tours, all that. As, do you feel like that's being done really well? And this is a really just a commendation and I've been trying to, to throw that out there to the city of that accessibility. People say that, oh, our voice isn't heard. But when you look at this process, it feels like it's pretty accessible.
Oh, it's incredibly accessible. And I think even just in comparison to the other taxing authorities within our area, we are very transparent and we have taken the extra step to get that information out. Now, I am not convinced that everyone is paying attention. I think that some people are. I know that they are. But I think that with as easy as it is to access that information, I don't know that everyone is taking advantage of it.
Yeah. Even the, like the depth that they put into that budget and, and you look at other authorities as mentioned, and there, there's depth that they have. I'm not saying that they don't go deep, but their budgets are, these are the numbers. Here they are. And the, the city is very, very detailed and trying to provide stuff so that way there's as much knowledge as possible. I think that's commendable.
And I think it was helpful that we based some of these decisions on the citizen satisfaction survey. You know, having that information, that was something that I definitely have to applaud city manager Stewart for because he brought on that survey and now we have accurate information on what people truly think is important.
Yeah. I think the biggest challenge he faces now is getting the roads up to the level that they want without having any downtime for the roads.
I know. It is ironic.
If he could fix that. Um, so speaking of the city satisfaction survey, one of the things that's been complained about is property taxes. That's always an interesting discussion. But at the beginning of this year, at the, at the state of the city, it was said, we're gonna, we're not raising property taxes at all. Like it's not going up even with assessed values or anything. It's just, it won't go up. And he's holding true. I guess he and you guys are holding true to that commitment. How much of that, how much of a priority was that in the discussions that you guys have had?
Well, it was certainly a very high priority for Mr. Stewart. And I think it was a high priority for our entire council. After we had our two and a half days of budget tours, we all had the opportunity to talk about, you know, what we had experienced and, and what we wanted to see moving forward. And, and I made the comment and I was criticized for it, that I wasn't necessarily in favor of that until I knew what the cuts were going to be. Because I didn't want to see such deep cuts that services were not going to be provided or that our employees would not be taken care of. And I was very pleasantly surprised when we had the budget handed to us to see that all of those things could be accomplished and our property taxes could go down.
Right. Very, uh, that's a very good point. So as you, as you've looked through the budget, and you've probably a little bit already addressed it with your, the end of your answer right there. Is there anything that you felt like, hey, this is missing? Now, I don't think there's any glaring things that are missing, but what I'm saying is it's not this budget, but in future years, we need to address this problem. This needs to be on our radar, even though we may not need to handle it 2025. Was there anything that stood out to you like that?
So there's a couple of things and they kind of focus around one department. And historically, we have been understaffed at the police department. It's been very, very difficult to be fully staffed. And that's going back at least a decade and, and across the nation. It's not just Minot. And so last year, when it was contemplated that we didn't fund all of the positions, it was brought to our attention that that was kind of tough on morale for the employees that we do have the police department. And so I did advocate for, for continuing to fund those positions because I want to keep the employees that we have. Right now we're down 15 employees. We don't want to see that number get any bigger. We want to go in the other direction. But this year, we are authorizing 14 positions and we're funding eight, I believe it is. I, I hope that we could get to 14. That would be wonderful. And if we do, if we're fortunate enough, then obviously that is money that will have to go into the 2026 budget. So that's something that I guess only time will tell. Then the other really big ticket item that wasn't addressed, and we've talked about it, but it is not in the budget, is what we are going to do with our current police department building, whether we will renovate that, if we're going to build new. I was on the, the committee that worked with a contractor to kind of do a space needs analysis and, and determine what would be best for the, the far future. I mean, they gave us an option for 25 years out and they gave us an option for 50 years out. Both are very expensive. But that is something that we absolutely have to address.
And this is like a very interesting problem. It may be it's too strong to call it a problem, but situation. Because it's going to cost a lot of money. Whatever, whatever happens, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Millions, millions.
And we're in two projects that we're getting federal funding for some and other funding for with Nas and, and the flood control. Is this something where you see, and I understand that there's no crystal ball we can look into, but is there, is this something that you see that we're able to begin to like actually take steps to complete in the next three to five years? Or is this something where we're going to have to get a solution that works? And then once some of these other projects fall off, we can begin to invest in. What plan forward do you kind of see? And I know that's a tough, tough thing for you to look at, but.
So I, I think if this were a question that were posed to our community, they would see it as a priority. And I think when it is a high priority, they are more than willing to find the dollars necessary. You know, one option that might be floated is a half cent sales tax. And obviously that's something that our voters would have to determine if they wanted to spend that money or not. But I think they see the need and I think they see it as a priority.
Absolutely. And it'll be interesting to see a revamped police station, how that affects recruitment.
Exactly.
As you mentioned at the outset, they probably tie together a little bit. All right. So two interesting things with the budget. One of them, we already kind of touched on the zero-based budget. And then the second thing that was a little bit different in the approach was the multiple year strategy. Do you see those things as something that is beneficial that maybe we should look at implementing year, year over year?
Well, I think it was very helpful. I mean, I think it's just good planning for our city manager and department heads to know what is coming down the road and, and then to involve us in that conversation too. Because when we know at least a year out, and obviously it'd be nicer if it were three years or five years, it makes decision-making a little bit easier.
Yeah. Yeah. So I commented on the city council meeting that was had recently, most recently on Monday. And I joked to someone, I was like, and this isn't, this was not a slam at council. Felt like maybe this was a city council meeting, we're going to run out of reserves. And it was a joke. I know we weren't. It was not a question, but it was one of those bad city council meetings that you guys had no control over that came up, we need to buy snowplows or, or graders. This project overruns. We, we need help with this. And it's probably difficult to make a decision on how to vote on it, on those situations without seeing a multiple year budget of understanding, hey, you know what? We have to be careful here because we also have something that we're going to have to find money for that might come from reserves. Do you think it will help with decision-making on decisions like those over time?
I think it will to some extent, but I also think that that is part of this job. We have to make some difficult decisions and sometimes don't have a lot of time to make those decisions. And, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about the amount of money that we have in reserves. I have been an advocate in the past to use some of those reserves to spend down a budget for the upcoming year. And we're seeing that again this year so that we're not double taxing people. But we also have a big organization and we can't be just, you know, working on a shoestring budget. You have to have some money in reserves because none of us do have a crystal ball. And we're looking 15, 18, maybe 24 months out. And if there isn't something in the savings to cover that, you know, it's, it's pretty scary. And, and I'll look back at March and April of 2020, when no one knew what was going to happen. And then all of a sudden, we're making even more difficult decisions because we don't know what, what dollars are going to come in or what expectation we're going to have for spending money. It worked out differently because that's what time that the federal government did jump in and said, here's some money. But when you are making those decisions, you have to make it with the information that you have. And I guess in my mind, it's nice to have a little bit of a cushion for some emergencies.
Right. Yeah. I think the reserves, obviously there's a big conversation there, or maybe it's big, maybe it's not. But it's definitely good to have reserves for sure. And, and it was mentioned by the city manager that the conservative focus of the city, when it comes to spending has been, is the reason why we're able to be involved in two very large projects. And I think that's something where, those are two important projects. I think most would agree with that. And so that's something that can be commendable. People try to find all the, the faults. That's the first place we go. But that's something that could be applauded from the city councils over, over the last many years of being able to keep us in that position.
And, and I'll say, I found it kind of ironic this year that there has been very little talk about flood control. There's been a little bit more with Nas because of hiring some of the, the biota plant employees. But, you know, again, when I say it's not my first rodeo, I've gone through this a number of years. And, you know, you turn the clock back even five years and that was the highest priority for people was to make sure that that flood control was funded and it was completed. And we're still there. It's a long project and it's an expensive project and we can't walk away from it now.
No, we can't. Yeah. That's an interesting thing. The time does heal some wounds, maybe. Some, the flood not being as fresh, maybe puts in people's back.
I, I'd argue though, that, I mean, if you lost your house in the flood, it's probably still pretty important to you.
Yeah. My parents, they went through, they were, they were building a house, just putting in carpet and the flood shows up. So they had to pull out the. Everyone has their story and yes, it does definitely stick out. One thing that's been a huge conversation is the pay plan. Obviously something's going to be done there. Four options were presented. The two extremes were either a 2.3 million increase in pay or no increase in pay. Probably both extreme, both of them are extremes and probably neither of them will be chosen. Somewhere in the middle will probably be the solution that happens. But it brings us to the question of that is, was brought out in that equation. There's 17 steps for an employee to go through, a city employee to go through, and they automatically get to go through those steps, right?
Yes. As long as their evaluations are good. Yes. As long as they are performing the job. Yes.
Break it down because, because it feels like, I, I've talked with, I've talked with like city manager. I've talked with mayor and, and I'll be honest, it seems like there is a little bit of a moving target here. Okay? So it was identified as, now I'm putting you on the hot seat. Cause now, now you get to go fight them. But no, one of them was saying that a merit-based deal is not based off performance. It's based off the time of service. That pay for performance is the one where you get to increase based off of how, uh, an annual review. Basically explain how the pay process works currently for a city employee. How do they get an increase in pay currently?
Well, by doing their job to the satisfaction of their supervisor.
Okay. So there's an annual review that's done?
Yes, for every employee.
Okay. And they will not, because the perception is right now that there's 17 steps. And I, I don't, maybe you get hit a step every year or every other year, however it goes. And you're automatically are going to go to the next step. People aren't held back a step. It would be very.
It would be rare.
It'd be, it'd be rare? Okay. So is it, is it a pay for performance then type of position at all? It, it's kind of sounds like it is though, a little bit, but we don't have probably to the length, maybe that you would if you, uh, an annual review to the length that you could have. Is that basically what it comes down to or? So I'm muddling the water here. Okay?
Yeah. I'm trying to think of how I want to best describe this because a lot of times when people who are not in public service look at pay plans for public employees, it looks, it looks kind of rich and it looks kind of easy. Like all you have to do is show up for work and you're going to get a raise. That's not entirely true. You have to show up for work. You have to do your job. You have to pass your evaluation, which is done on an annual basis. If you're not, I assume that, you know, an employee would be given an opportunity to make some improvements. If not, they probably are not going to be employed with, with the city any longer. But it's a, a steady increase that public employees can plan on, they can budget for. And it's different than the business world where if it's a lean year and you're working in a business or owning a business, you aren't going to have much take-home pay. But if it's a great year, you're probably getting some kind of bonus or whatever. So there, it's different. And it, you know, a lot of people want to compare them apples to apples and they're not. They're, they're very different. Now, the 17-step plan is probably, quite honestly, it's not a 17-step plan because it never ends. Because once you get to the top on step 17, you still get annual increases. So I think that that does need to be reviewed. Certainly our HR director talked about that. And so I think that's something that we have to look into.
Uh, one more question that I don't know the answer to. Is there an, do they get an annual bonus?
There's no bonuses.
There's no bonuses? See, that's something that's really, and you mentioned it a little bit, but that's something that's really important to point out.
Yeah. There's absolutely no bonuses. No, what, what they, what's stated on the pay, pay plan is, is what they are going to receive.
Okay. So yeah, uh, there's a consultant that has suggested that we go from a 17 to maybe more of a 10-step, which is what some of the competitors are doing. That'll get sorted out, probably a solution somewhere. The, right now though, there's a chance that we would have a step-based, employees would either have a step-based or a, a market adjustment increase, right? What, what do you see the best plan forward on the pay plan?
Well, I like the hybrid that has been suggested because I do believe that our employees deserve an increase in pay. Those that are performing their job, they're doing what they need to do. I think that they need to, to see an increase. I, I think anywhere around the world, I mean, whatever you're doing, you hope that you're going to have an annual increase. And so looking at that hybrid, everyone gets an increase, whether it's the market increase or the step increase. If we pick one or the other, you're kind of picking a winner and a loser.
Yeah. It's fair. I, I have an idea. Okay. And I, and I want to hear honest truth on it because it could be a terrible idea. But I, I have an idea of potentially the, the hybrid. I, I would mostly agree with that plan. But having a, the department leaders be more of a, on a performance-based pay plan. Okay. And I, I want to hear the, the good and the bad. I want to hear the bad part of it. Okay?
Okay. So I mean, I worked my whole career in public service, so I'm not in favor of that. Because I don't know, again, how you make the comparisons. I, I think that if, everyone likes a firefighter. You know, firefighter is a hero and they come and they save your house and they save your cat. And they do all those good things. So it's easier for the public to see that they're doing good things and we should give that person a raise. You know, if you're running the sewer department, you're not going to be seen by the public. I, I don't, I don't even know how you evaluate it. Is it how many, you know, pipe fittings are attached? Water breaks are repaired? I, I don't even know how you look at it. So I, I think that and essentially that is merit pay. And in my mind, I think that's best left to private business and, and not for public employees.
That's, that's understandable. All right. So something that was left out of the, the budget, you mentioned the legacy city hall. Something else that this is a big deal evidently. Okay. Wayfinding signs. All right. First question. And I've asked a couple of this, a couple of this. So sorry, but I, it's an interesting thing. To me, it's funny. Friday afternoon, Friday morning, the engagement director at the city goes and puts out a post saying, hey, wayfinding signs that you voted on, that probably wasn't mentioned in it, but the, the city council voted on it, but people had the, I didn't mean to put it that way. The people had a chance to talk about it. You had a chance to show up to council and say, say if you were in favor or not, uh, they're going up now. And then that blew up.
It did. Big.
Hundreds of comments, hundred, probably almost 500 likes or dislikes or however people engaged with it. Did you anticipate that much of a, of a reaction by the city to wayfinding signs going up?
No, I, I didn't. And I'll say, in the very beginning, I was a little hesitant to agree to them to, I used, or at least asked the same question, use the same rationale, like we all have a phone in our pocket. Why in the world are we going to invest in these signs? And I was convinced, and I'll say just personally, when I visit a new city and I don't know what's available, I look at signs that are similar to that. I think our signs are a little big and I think there might be a few too many. I will say that. But, you know, as many dislikes as I've seen on social media, I have had a number of people come up and say, I think they're beautiful. I think they look great. You know, I had a person from Bismarck recently that I visited with and said, when I drove into Minot, I was so impressed that those signs are there. So, you know, obviously the, the negative voice probably gets heard a little bit more.
But it's good to hear the positive sides. I, I think the one that cracks me up, I saw the other, last weekend, that was shopping district pointing to the mall. That one, that one to me was kind of funny because I was like, I mean, if you're from out of town, that probably gets a little more excited. We have a good mall. We, we have good stuff. But to be like a shopping district, you're thinking there might be a Nike store. There might be like, we're going to go shopping, right? It's a little bit different, but I, I get that. And I have, when I've been in downtown areas and other places, I have used those signs. Cause I honestly, I'm a young person, I guess, in the age of tech is what I'm talking about. But I hate going and planning out my trips in great detail. I hate it. I'm like, we're going to this place. Let's go and figure out something to do. And so the signs are very productive. So, so for in a situation like that, they could be a very good thing.
Now, I'll, I'll just add one more thing. It would have been nice if people would have engaged in, in the beginning and, you know, and then that's true for anything. We're hearing some, or I shouldn't even say hearing. I had zero phone calls. I had zero emails related to the budget. You know, it was announced prior to July 30th that we were having our budget Q and A and contact your, your council members, zero. Now, I do read social media and I see the comments that are on there, but no one is, is reaching out with, you know, a question or a concern. They're taking to social media to kind of voice their opposition to things.
It's going to be interesting to see how that virtual Q and A goes with the department leaders. And, and I don't know if it's, if it's a good thing or not, honestly.
Oh, I think it's good. I, you know, they've done it in the past and I, I don't know that there was a great response, but I guess even if there's a handful of people that get some questions answered, you know, and it's, it stays online. So it's available. People can go back and refer to it. Any way that we can get information out, I think is helpful.
And I, the reason why I said, I don't know if it's a good thing or not, the, the, the negative thing that I could see from it is sometimes like we saw with the wayfinding side, you get, as the term goes, keyboard warriors, right? That really they have, aren't interested in constructive or, or productive conversation. And so that's the part where, but in the past, they've been somewhat successful. People showed up, good questions asked and stuff like that.
Yes. And I think, you know, more, or some departments have more interest than others.
Yeah, for sure. All right. There was a $28 million increase in the budget and that makes a really cool headline. That gets you clicks. That's what we like around here, right? All right. So break it down for us. Some, obviously we know that a lot of this is from reserves intentionally. As far as some of the projects that are going on, they, there was money that was saved up for those projects. So there's an increase in the project because those projects need it. Or increase in the budget because those projects need it. So it really has no effect on the taxpayers. And we're not delving into reserves to make it where there's no effect on the task taxpayers. One of the things that pops up though, is the $3 million in personnel increase. That's because. uh in personnel increase. That's because there's some new employees and there's the the pay raise. Um is this something that the city should be concerned about? Uh a twenty-eight million dollar increase in the budget, is this something that we should be like, alright, this is one year, but we can't have this happen every year? Or what's what's your view on it?
I I mean, I I think you answered part of your question. Part of it is some of these projects such as Nas and in flood control where we've known they were coming, the money has been held in reserves and now it's time to, you know, pay for whatever work has been done.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you think, do you think it's gonna become a trend and it's gonna force Minot into a like, let me ask it this way, because I'm I'm working towards back to property taxes and is there, should a citizen anticipate an increase in property taxes year over year?
I think as long as there are increases, you know, due to inflation in other areas, yes, I think that small increases should be expected because, you know, government is no different than anyone else. We're we're buying fuel, we're we're paying for supplies, whatever it is, we're paying employees. And so yes, I don't think it's unreasonable to see some sort of increase.
Uh yeah, I don't necessarily disagree with that either, because like, just an increase in the mill levy, and I know that that's a complicated, well, not comp- too complicated, but it is a little bit complicated of a discussion there. But just the fact that your house goes up, there should be an anticipation that there's an, your house goes up in value. There should be an anticipation that your property taxes go up. I think that should be fair.
Probably, and 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 that's kind of a a two-edged sword there too, where maybe the, maybe nothing else is going up except for home value. So I wouldn't say that you should expect a property tax increase just because the valuation of your home goes up, but if everything else is going up, if it's, you know, the cost of a gas and
Yeah.
whatever it is, then yeah, you you're going to probably anticipate that increase.
And for the people that don't like me saying that the question of property taxes itself, because obviously there's a discussion of other property taxes to be removed.
Yeah.
And I, you probably can't comment on that now because it's, there's actually something on the ballot now with it. Um but that's a whole nother discussion of what I'm trying to say. There's property taxes, I think it's fair, and you mentioned a great point. Like probably, you guys probably dealt with that during the oil boom and home prices were skyrocketing.
Yes.
If you would have increased property taxes to be consistent with that, they would have like, some of them would have probably nearly doubled. There was some crazy.
Right, and the the true blessing that we had at that time was our sales tax, um revenue was very high. And that offset some of that.
Okay.
So that that was, we did see some increases as well and and you know, what have you, but sales tax helped cover some of those costs.
So something else interesting that came out of discussions with the budget was uh the federal funding for a new bus. And it brings up the question, because we're in projects that we're getting federal funding for.
Yes.
Do you, how much do you consider the strings as is often termed with it? When we're receiving federal funding, are you overly concerned about them or are they normally pretty fair? What what's your approach to looking at tho- that type of thing?
I guess I haven't found them overly concerning. Um in large part because without the federal funding or without the state funding, many of these projects would never take place. There's no way that at a municipal level, we could afford to do any of these things. So
Yeah.
Yes, there are strings. We get that and it depends, you know, it it varies from project to project. Um but I wouldn't say no to federal funding because there would be some requirements attached to it.
Okay, and that wasn't a sub question, but I want to ask directly at the bus. Do you feel like them requiring a hybrid bus is too much to ask? And that we should stay with diesel because, and this is to the naive person, naive person like me. Hey, does it require different mechanics? Do we need different skills in order to maintain these buses? Those type of questions. If there's something major that goes on with the bus, are we able to get that taken care of locally or does the bus then have to be shipped out? What happens um with this new type of of uh technology or whatever being used with our our uh cars and in this case, the bus. Does stuff like, is that something that should be a concern? Does that play into a decision of whether or not we go after a hybrid bus or if we stick with the diesel?
Well, certainly, and and most of those questions were asked and our bus, our bus superintendent, Brian Herenka, was able to answer a lot of those questions and
Yeah.
in saying that, yes, our mechanic could take care of them and that, you know, it wasn't a fully electric bus that a lot of people had concerns about in
It's not that.
climate. It was a hybrid and uh, you know, a a larger percentage is paid. I I think that we could possibly apply for some funds for a a fully diesel bus, but as he indicated in the meeting, we're less likely to receive it and probably be at a lower amount.
Yeah, most likely with the hybrid bus, we'll receive up to eighty-five percent and it'll be close to that eighty-five percent. And then with the diesel, the federal is just going away from it. And yeah, probably a good thing. Uh it'll be an interesting thing just to see for sure, to see how that does. It's definitely good that we're not doing electric. I think everybody on the council
Yes.
and agree with that. That'd be too much change at once.
I think it is too much change and, you know, again, he he made comparisons to New York City and Los Angeles. We're not
Right.
we're not in those environments. We don't have the ridership that, you know, larger cities have. And so, no, I don't think it's appropriate at this time.
Very good. Well, we we talked about a lot of things. We, when we looked at all the negative things. So let let's end on a positive note. What are some of the things that you're excited about that might stem from the budget directly um for twenty twenty-five or just in general as you look ahead?
Well, again, I was just incredibly pleased that we could continue to offer the services that I think our residents expect and deserve and still lower property taxes. And you know, again, looking around the area, we might be the only taxing authority that's able to do that. And so, you know, kudos to our staff that could present that to us and we know there will be a decrease because we've passed our preliminary budget.
Yep.
There might even be more of a decrease, who knows, as we have those conversations. But I, you know, I'm I'm proud of the fact that even though it's not a big amount, we're still gonna lower taxes instead of raise them.
No, absolutely. Very good. Well, appreciate you coming on today.
Thank you.
Absolutely. This has been another episode of Minot Matters. You have the Decoding brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. This is part of our Budget Chronicles. Make sure you follow along as we provide information on the two thousand twenty-five budget across many uh taxing authorities in Minot. Uh go, follow us on Facebook, like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Decoding community. Thank you and have a great day.